About what should be done at the government level, right?
That's right. There's gonna have to be a balance, I guess, between getting the economy and paying, you know, getting by financially and the risk of additional exposure.
It doesn't make sense, you know, with all these areas like Montana and South Dakota and North Dakota. I don't know why they aren't letting them open. The population density there isn't, even if they had a little outbreak, is not gonna be like New York City.
Right. But it does look like Tulare County's taking this thing seriously, does it?
Well, you know, Tulare County, we're gonna be the last ones to open with all the data that they have on us. Nursing homes. We're the nursing home central. I was reading about that Lindsay Gardens. We have an article on my online feed. That was awful what they were doing to those people that are the workers. They didn't feel good and they were saying you have to come in anyway. And some of these nurses actually had the virus and they were coming in, had to work.
Yeah, that's certainly not taken it seriously, is it?
No. Trying to figure out how do I get my volume here?
Nope. It's on. I'm ready. Got this longer chair over here. I don't know. What are they, short legs?
I can't get my volume up. Is there a, Bill, can you hear me?
I hear you fine.
Is there a volume on the Zoom function?
You're plenty loud, so can you hear me now?
You're not so much on my end, that's why I was wondering.
Can you hear me? That better?
Yeah, it's not real loud, but I can hear you.
It's loud here.
The mic's not on, I'll be.
The county can see.
Commissioner Millies, can you tell me what you see on your screen?
I see the first slide for the meeting.
Okay, perfect.
I don't see, is there a volume of Velma on the Zoom function?
I'm not aware of.
I know on my laptop there is, but I don't know how, I'm afraid to minimize the Zoom and screw it up, but.
Use your keys on your keyboard. There's a plus and a minus. It increases the volume at the top.
Yeah.
It's like F.
Yeah, but you have to hit the right. What is it?
It's like F three or four. You see a little speaker.
Oh yeah, there it is, there it is.
Push it, push it, keep pushing until you get the volume you want.
You know, you should have been IT, Bill. You're in the wrong business.
Too old. So are you.
Maybe you could do that. Now that you're old, maybe you could do that in your retirement.
We're old. So, except for Steve. But anyway, good morning again and welcome to the May 13th, 2020 Planning Commission. Commission. We'll start with roll call, please. It's a little after nine.
McAlroy? Millies?
Here.
Elliot?
Here.
Commissioner Diaz?
Ed, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Whitlatch?
Here.
Pearson?
Here.
Aguilar?
Here.
Please stand me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, members of public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to participate in today's public comment via telephone, please call 559-624-7004. You'll be connected to the boardroom to address the planning commission the same manner if you were here in person. Please state your name and address for the record in order to be heard by everyone in the room. Your statements will go out live audio streaming and will be included in the audio recording of the meeting. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the planning commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, will the public be invited to make comments at the time it comes up for planning commission consideration? So that all interested parties may have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the chair, the planning commission may be limited by the chair, that's me. In order to be considered for planning commission testimony in the public hearing, items must be given at the time they're scheduled for the hearing. So is anyone who would like to come forward and testify anything that's not on our agenda? And is there anyone that's? Is there anyone, and by the way, you turn your cellphone. This is very annoying, so I give myself a penalty for that. Is there anyone who is listening online that would like to make a public comment at this time? We'll wait 60 seconds.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I'd like to introduce the planning commissioner, new attorney.
Oh. Did he pass the bar? Congratulations.
Long time ago, too. But yeah, hello, I recognize a couple of you, Mr. Aguilar, Mr. McAlroy. I'm just getting out of the office and taking in a meeting, so.
Welcome. Glad to have you. Keep us straight.
How about a little on your background? Where'd you come from?
I grew up in, I grew up in Los Angeles. I went to college back east and went to law school at Loyola Law School in LA. I've been an attorney for almost 13 years now. My wife's an attorney. She's a Visalia native, born and raised, so.
Last name, what was her last name?
Her last name was Moke.
Okay. And where did you grow up in Los Angeles? Cause I'm from Los Angeles, but it's.
San Marino.
I'm from Pasadena, Alacanada.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Well, welcome.
Went to a lot of Rose Bowls growing up.
Went to St. Francis.
Oh yeah, of course, yeah. I had friends that went there.
Yeah.
You guys more neighbors or something?
Maybe with his grandfather or something, I don't know.
Yeah, well, my dad could have been his father. I don't know, or maybe his dad, I'm not sure. Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Correct. It's on Granicus at the moment.
So we, if you could announce, we are on Granicus. And no longer on Face, we don't have a Facebook feed at this time.
Well, if there's someone who is listening to this and wants to comment on items not on the agenda, if they call in, we will allow that.
Right. So Velma, could you announce the Granicus website to the public? What's it, W? You just give us the link.
Let me find it. I don't have it in front of me. Hold on one moment. So you would go to tulary.granicus.com slash.
Spell the word Granicus, that's an unusual word.
It's G-R-A-N-I-C-U-S dot com slash viewpublisher dot P-H-P question mark view underscore I-D the equal sign and three one.
Repeat it just one more time.
Tulary dot Granicus, G-R-A-N-I-C-U-S dot com slash viewpublisher dot P-H-P question mark view underscore I-D equal sign three one.
Thank you. We'll move on to item three, approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion for my fellow commissioners, please?
I motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Roll call.
McAlroy?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes, I didn't hear that. I didn't hear my name.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Ed?
He's on mute or something.
Yeah, he's on mute.
Did you vote yet? Approval of the minutes, Ed?
I'm sorry, I was muted for a second there. Yes, I approved the minutes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
You know, this is a lot of work. I think I should get a pay raise.
We'll all be lucky to have jobs, so thanks.
Well, thank you. Item four, this is a parcel map public hearing. Action on all parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of these items requests that it be pulled for a separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given on any item unless requested. In any case, there will be a separate vote on these items, and there's only one item. Item A, which is a tentative parcel map, PPM 20 dash 009. And so do I have a motion to approve?
Through the chair, do we want to open and close the public hearing first?
I'll open the public hearing. I'll close the public hearing. Thank you. Thanks, Cliff.
Good job, Eric.
A minute for people on the phone, or no?
Yeah, if we could give, I know there was a.
60 seconds.
60 seconds.
Chairman, you need to bring a stopwatch next time.
I want to bring my lunch. Besides that, I just lost my raise, so.
Wayne, was your fan turning backwards the other day?
Uh, I don't know. Very observant.
I'm just saying, I don't remember either.
Are you mesmerized by the fan?
I'm just watching it turn.
Gets hypnotized.
And look for a motion to vote on either yea or nay on 4A. Would like to make that motion?
One of my neighbors, this is one of my neighbors and three-overs, and I've been, actually I've known these people because they're on the ditch with us. And we've been watching the activity over there, and I will make a motion to approve tentative parcel map. Number PPM 20009, Jeremy Relton, California Land Surveying.
Should be the whole thing is put down, or is that good enough? It says a categorical exemption.
As long as we get to the categorical exemption in the motion.
Okay. To divide a 48.96 acre into two APN property into two parcels. Parcel one is 7.16 acres and parcel two is 41.35 with an exception for a parcel with an irregular shape and final map required in the RA 43 Rural Residential.
This is PPM 20.
And to approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environment Quality Act and State Sequel Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations, Section 15301 Class 1 pertaining to existing facilities and conditionally approve the tentative parcel map with an exception and final map required.
Do I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Roll call.
McAlroy? Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Pearson? Aguilar?
Motion carried. Move to item five.
I need to recuse myself on this one.
I noticed the name was very similar, so.
Very similar.
Yeah.
Are you, are you gonna speak at the microphone, or is that?
Only if you ask to do.
Okay.
This is a public, public hearing. This is a public hearing to members of the public. If you wish to participate in today's public hearing via telephone, please call 559-624-7004. You will be connected to the boardroom to address the planning commission in the same manner as if you were here in person. Please state your name and address for the record in order to be heard by everyone in the room. Your statements will go out on live audio stream. It will be included in the auto recording of the meeting. Timer will be set for three minutes, rather, so please address, adhere to the time limitation. If you choose to call in, you may participate by submitting an email that this item is being heard. Emails should include your sender's name and address for the record. Emails should include the subject agenda, in this case, it's agenda number five, and this is law, seat to the clerk of the planning, so it's, what's that? And sent to the clerk of the planning commission at planningcommission@co.tulary.ca.us. That's planning commission, all one word, at co.tulary.ca.us. Every effort will be made to read your comment in the record, but some comments may not be read due to time limitations. Comments received after the public hearing has closed will be made part of the record if you receive, if you receive before the end of the, if you receive before the end of the money, meeting. That concludes the instructions for today's public hearing. So go to 5A and it's, we're opening the public hearing, right? Yeah. And it's a general planment number GPA 20 dash 007, zone change number PZC 20 dash 002, tentative subdivision map number TCM 20 dash 001, and Aguilar, Skylabs Residential Designs, and we'll start with our staff report today by Sandy?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
For a while. It's good to see you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, Sandy Roper from the Resource Management Agency. The application again is general plan amendment number 20 dash 007, zone change number PZC 20 dash 002 and tentative subdivision map number TSM 20 dash 001 for Aguilar, and the agent is Skylab Residential Designs. The general plan amendment is proposing to change the land use designation on approximately 12 acres from valley agriculture to mixed use. The Resource Management Agency is proposing to expand the hamlet development boundary of East Tulare Villa northward and encompass approximately 79 acres, and to change the land use designation on that 79 acres from valley agriculture to mixed use. The zone change proposes to change the zone district on one 12 acre parcel from AE 40 to RA 87. And the tentative subdivision map proposes to subdivide the 12 acre parcel into six two acre lots. Again, the agent is Skylab Residential Designs and the project's located at 13198 Avenue 232 on the north side of the intersection of Avenue 232, which is and Road 132 east of Tulare. On the screen now is the location and property ownership map, and the public hearing notice was both published and mailed on April 29th of 2020. The next map is the vicinity map showing the location of the property again at 13198 Avenue 232 on the side of intersection of Avenue 232 and Road 132 east of Tulare. The next item on the screen is the aerial picture of the property, and the site contains one existing single family dwelling. Concerning general plan consistency, the county's general plan amendment policy provides that the board shall shall give consideration as to the public need or necessity of the amendment and whether or not the proposed amendment would further the goals, objectives and policies of the general plan and not obstruct their attainment. The general plan update provides land use, the land use mechanism for development projects within this area. As such, the projects require consistency with the general plan update policies in the planning framework element. PF 3.2 concerning modification of a hamlet development boundary. The county may consider modification of a HDB under any of the following circumstances, and there are four possibilities. And the project qualifies under the second item, which would be a request for an expansion can be applied for as part of a subdivision or a specific plan proposal, or at the request of a special district or hamlet. A request for expansion of the HDB can be applied for as part of a general plan amendment to the land use diagram. And in this case, the modification for the HDB for the East Tulare Villa is consistent with number two in that request was made by the applicant for a subdivision of real property. The Rural Valley Lands Plan, RL, RV LP 1.2, existing parcels and approvals. The county shall consider the rezoning of existing parcels less than the minimum required by agricultural zoning if found not to be viable for agricultural purposes as per the RL, RV LP checklist. And if such rezoning would not impinge on current or future agricultural uses in the area. A RV LP parcel evaluation was performed for the 12 acre parcel, which is the parcel requesting the zone change at this time. After all of the factors were applied, the parcel for the project received a preliminary evaluation of 12 points. And according to policy, RV LP 1.4, determination of agricultural land, if the number of points accumulated is between 12 and 16 points, then it shall be deemed to be fallen within gray area in which the, in which no clear decision is readily apparent. In these instances, the planning commission and the board of supervisors shall make a decision based on the unique circumstances pertaining to the particular parcel, including factors not covered by the system. And this evaluation is in attachment number six in your packet for the RV LP checklist. The proposed general plan amendment and project are consistent with the Tulare County general plan and would further the goals, objectives and policies of that plan and would not obstruct their attainment. The requested land use designation is mixed use, and this designation establishes areas appropriate for the planned integration of some combination of retail, office, single and multifamily residential, hotel, recreation, limited industrial, public facilities and other compatible uses. On the screen now is a copy of the existing general plan map, you know, that shows the existing hamlet development boundary. And the next screen item shows the proposed general plan map, which shows the boundary being extended to the north. And the project site is identified with the bold outline.
Can you go back one map? I'd like to see that again. Okay.
Okay, so the map of the existing general plan, the red line at the northern end is proposed to be moved north go on the north side of Avenue 232. And the next map, which shows the proposed general plan map, shows the area proposed to be added, the 79 acres north of Avenue 232.
So does that mean there's a different zoning around the entire proposed parcel? Is that what you're saying?
No, this map is for the general plan land use.
Oh, just general plan, okay.
And we'll get to the maps of the existing and proposed zoning in just a moment. However, as far as what's proposed for the zone change, it would only be the 12 acre parcel where the proposed subdivision is located, which is the area highlighted with the dark black border. And it's also labeled as site. Zoning consistency, the applicant requests that the zone district be changed concurrently with the general plan amendment. Currently, the parcel is zoned AE 40 and the proposed zoning is RA 87. The residential zone is intended for one family dwellings, placed in permanent locations and one family manufactured homes installed on a foundation system. Private garages accommodating not more than three cars. Transitional supplemental housing, growing and harvesting of field crops, and the raising of farm animals. The property is not restricted by a Williamson Act contract. The Tulare County Public Works Engineering Branch Assessor, Environmental Health Services Division, Fire Department and Caltrans have all responded to a consultation notice that was sent out on February 11th of 2020. The map on the screen now shows the existing site being located within the AE 40 zoning. And again, the project site has the dark black border. And the next slide shows the proposal to change to RA 87 from AE 40. The next slide shows the tentative subdivision map. Access to the proposed parcel numbers one through five is direct through Road 132. As proposed, parcel number six is via a proposed 20 foot access easement off of Avenue 232. However, Caltrans has stated that they will not allow the proposed access easement off of Avenue 232, and as a result, the proposed parcel number six will have to have revised access easement to Road, was it 132? The staff is recommending that the commission recommend that the board, the supervisors approve a categorical exemption consistent with California Environmental Quality Act and the State Sequel Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code of Regulations. Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and approve general plan amendment number 20 dash 007 to expand the hamlet development boundary of East Tulare Villa Hamlet. And approve the change of land use designation on approximately 79 acres from AE 40 to, or excuse me, to agriculture, from agriculture to mixed use. Two, recommended that the board approve a categorical exemption. Two, recommend that the board approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and the State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and approve zone change PZC 20-002 to change the zone district on one 12-acre parcel from AE40 to RA87 east of Tulare. And third, recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and the State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Section 1615303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and approve tentative subdivision map 20-001 to subdivide the 12-acre parcel into six 2-acre lots east of Tulare. This concludes the staff report unless there are any questions.
What we're going to do now is a little bit different. I'm going to call on each commissioner to ask if they have any questions. We'll start with Wayne Millies. Can you hear me, Wayne? Turn your mic on, Wayne. Okay, Velma's got to turn you on. There you go.
He's got to turn on his own mic.
Turn on your mic.
Just a moment, got it. Yes, I can hear you.
Do you have any comments? You asked those.
You said Sandy, this is a mixed-use project?
The proposal is to change the land use designation in the general plan from agriculture to mixed-use, and also to propose a zone change from AE40 to RA87, and also subdivide the 12-acre parcel into six
Six.
Two-acre lots.
Six two-acre lots?
Yes.
For residential?
Correct.
Okay. No, I don't have any other, I have no further question.
Sandy, just one question. I may have missed it there because it's kind of hard for me to hear, but have they resolved access to that one lot that has been isolated due to the Caltrans denial of access off of, was it 232?
In the Planning Commission packet, there's a discussion concerning Caltrans prohibiting access to Lot 6 from 132. And as a result of that action from Caltrans, the access for parcel number 6 will have to be revised to have an easement instead to 132.
Anything else?
So they haven't, they haven't resolved it yet, is what we're saying?
At this point, the only option is to revise the access to go to 132 rather than 232 since Caltrans will not permit the easement to 232.
If I may, this will be resolved through the final map process. The easement would be recorded at that time. That would be the only way to really fix it at this point, Commissioner.
All right, that's fine. That's all I had.
Steve?
No, that was my concern, is the access on that with Caltrans, but that seems to be in the works.
Maria?
Couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Okay. Some of this is learning and some just stuff that jumped out, but it said in this packet that this was a project that was given 12 points, which is a gray area. Can you explain that a little bit?
Well, the county general plan has the Rural Valley Lands Plan, and it contains regulations pertaining to requests for zone changes. And there is a checklist that has to be completed, and there's also backup information to support the conclusions in the checklist. And after completing the checklist, it gives you a number of points. And according to the Rural Valley Lands Plans, if you're between 12 and 16, it's considered a gray area. And the Planning Commission and Board, you know, would be the ones to make a determination concerning whether or not the zone change would be appropriate. Under the Rural Valley Lands Plans, you know, eight or fewer points is assumed to be compatible, and 12 to 16 is gray, which leaves it up to the discretion of Planning Commission and the Board.
Okay, so I have a second question that's independent of this, but as a follow-up to that response, Sandy, and what I'm thinking, so what percentage of gray area projects do we typically approve?
Well, I would need to defer to Planning Director considering the lack of my institutional knowledge on my part.
Yes, generally, I would say, and I don't have any hard numbers in front of me, I'd say about half the projects we deal with have that number, somewhere between 12 and 16. They're not slam dunks, in other words. But in regards to how many have been approved, all of, all the projects have been approved in that range. And we do have precedent for scores even higher than that that the Board has approved. So, but, you know, just following along the regulations, it does give us discretion. But I'd also like to tell the Planning Commission that if we do not think that project's going to fall into that range, for the most part, you never hear of those projects. They don't, they don't really go past the counter itself. We don't like to bring projects in front of you that won't, won't make the numbers, so.
Okay. And my second question, aside from that one, is regarding the classification of farmland, because from what I was reading, there's three different classifications, one of which is definitely not preferred, and two could be converted. What classification of farmland type does this one have, this 12-acre property?
Yeah, you'll have to bear with me. I don't have a hard copy of the packet.
Right, so just looking at the, on page 66 of your packet, the land capabilities, the soils, the soils are classified at the highest point value, that in fact, that's half, a third of the points that were entered here is because of the soils themselves, as far as that classification. But they didn't receive any of the other points, except for, it's interesting, in question B, the variable point values, it gets double points, in other words, because of the soil quality. And under C, it gets extra points because of the parcel size, but outside of that, it didn't receive any other points because it's not a viable, it's not agriculturally viable outside of those two conditions.
I was just curious because of the difference between, you know, prime land, I might not be using the terms right, but prime farmland versus agriculturally important versus not.
Yeah, the state, the FMMP, Department of Conservation qualifies land as prime of statewide importance or of local importance. In and of itself, again, this is so close to existing development and is, would be a progression of existing development, so usually gets, the soils might be, you know, great, but if it's not being farmed, or has access to water, or any of these other conditions, or surrounded by development, then it gets lesser points. That factor in and of itself is not the end-all, the soil quality.
Is that it? You had three, three questions. You said two, but it was three, so now we're four. But that's okay.
But, no, I just, I just want to make sure there's nothing coming back at us later. There's, I need to find the citation, Aaron, and maybe I can come back to it, just because I need
We're going to have one more comment.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
John?
There wasn't.
All right, you feeling okay?
I'd like to just comment, as a planning commissioner in 21-plus years, I don't ever remember us turning down anything. I guess if we had enough public opposition, that may be a reason to consider that, but pretty much when it gets this far, it's, we approve it, move it on to the supervisors. So, having said that, I will
Were you trying to influence us?
No. I can't influence you.
Wayne does what he wants in
I had to say that, I had to say
No, no, it's okay, I just want to know.
Inside baseball, inside baseball.
Offices next to each other. But anyway, moving right along, I will move on to the public comment at this time, so any people from the public who would like to comment on this item, would you please come forward? If there's, if there is anyone, and is there anyone online waiting to comment? We'll
We have the agent from Skylab on the phone. If you have questions only, he wants to speak.
Well, plug him through and then introduce yourself, tell us what you do, and then I'll move to my board members to ask you questions.
Okay, let her send the call through.
Is he there?
It'll ring right now.
So is it true, we're here, Ed, you're drinking Long Island iced teas as you wait?
No, I don't have anything in front of me right now, but I'd like to.
There you go.
Are we on a delay? Is that what we're waiting for?
We're waiting for the agent to connect.
Hello?
Heard something about Ed and Long Island iced tea. Hello?
Yes, yes.
Good morning, thank you for holding. You are now connected to the Planning Commission meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Well, thank you very much, first of all, thank you. My name is Jesus Gutierrez, and my address is 1004 West Main Street in Visalia. I'm the agent for the, for the project.
So what I'm going to do right now is I'm going to ask each commissioner if he has any questions of you. So we'll start with Wayne.
Mr. Gutierrez, good morning.
Good morning.
I noticed, I don't notice, it is, there's a comment on the mixed-use designation, and I'm curious, is there a plan in this development to do something in the area of higher density in terms of non-residential? Or there's the ability to cluster? So what is, what's the intent of the mixed-use designation here in this development?
And the mixed-use actually came up from the staff, from the county staff, because we weren't even aware that we were going to be put on there as a mixed-use under the the land use. No, our intent is to build single-family homes
Okay. So, so that's not part of your strategy, mixed-use?
No, it isn't, no.
All right.
Wayne, you want to, I mean, excuse me, Sandy, you want to comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to remind the commission that the, you know, proposal is to have single-family dwellings, one on each parcel, with individual wells and septic systems. And because of the wells and septic systems, it does place a limitation on, you know, the density, because there is not water and sewer service available from a community or a city.
That's your question, Wayne?
Yeah, well, that answers my question. It's because the mixed-use designation popped up in this, you know, I would just wanted to rule it in or rule it out in terms of part of the development.
Ed, you have any comments?
No, I don't have any comments. It's pretty straightforward. This is kind of a rural residential, it's a nice buffer between the more densely residential area to the south, and I can see where it's going to be harder and harder to farm because of this residential encroachment, so I think it's a good buffer and good use.
John Elliott?
I think it'll work.
John likes it. Steve?
It should work, yeah.
Okay, Maria?
I can't find my, what I read. It's not swimming, no. I mean, it sounds good. I just wanted to clarify what our abilities to do things were.
Well, I think what Ed said sums it up. It's a good buffer, and it's, it's just one house per lot. It could be up to two houses per, no, it can't be, that has to be a different zoning. So you only put one house, right?
Well, no, it's our zone, so it does have the residential, so it would get the ministerial second residence, but
Okay.
Again, there would be limitations potentially on sewer and water out in that area.
Okay. So is there anyone else in cyberspace that wants to call in? I'm going to give one more 60-second chance for you to comment if you're listening to this and want to call in. So the 60 seconds is starting now.
Found it.
Velma?
Aaron?
Yes.
Aaron, this is Wayne. So one more comment on this mixed-use. So if someone wants to build a residential parcel, structure, and then have a sheet metal shop commercial on the side, is that where the mixed-use would pick that up and capture it as an okay thing?
They'd have to, this project in itself is going to be zoned to residential. The underlying mixed-use designation is, when we, when this planning commission and board designated all the hamlets in the county, they designated them mixed-use. So mixed-use as a land use is underlying all the hamlets. All we're doing is continuing that mixed-use land use. That if there was a proposal, as you're suggesting, that's half-commercial, half-residential, they'd actually have to come through and rezone the property around it. And that, that is just merely consistent with the underlying land use throughout the rest of that, that hamlet.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Maria, you found it.
I found where, I was looking toward the back and it's toward the front. So I just, I don't know to ask Sandy or Aaron, but in page three on PF 3.2 modification of HDB hamlet, it says HDB should not be expanded into prime farmland if farmland of statewide importance or of lesser quality is available and suitable for expansion. So my question is less about the 12-acre specifically, but the whole HDB, I guess, because of what that says there.
Well, just let me answer that. Now, if there is a choice, and we are talking again about FMMP guidance, not necessarily, not necessarily RVLP guidance, that the choice would be to move in the direction of the lesser important farmland. But as far as making that choice, that is one of the considerations, but it's not the totality of the considerations. So it's something you think about. But regardless of that, the, again, using the RVLP as a guiding tool to rezoning properties, I think we made the findings that this isn't viable agricultural land in this, this area, so.
I think also this will require a public report because it's more than four lots, correct?
move in that direction, you know, it's just one of the, the guiding factors, but so far we haven't, because we did twenty-two community plans, and we updated those in one fell swoop a couple of years ago, again, it's one of the considerations when we do expand the, the boundaries, but it's not the, the only consideration, and that's where you get into the zoning itself, because it's still going to be farmed, the surrounding areas, regardless, but the, that we want to make sure that if we're going to expand, or if the city is going to expand, that we have, and we, we had calls previously about this area, when we were doing the update in the first place on the south side, and we said, you know, this, unless there's a development proposal in that area, it's kind of a step too far, but now we have interest in a development proposal, and so we, we know it's going to expand in that direction, so that they all kind of, like I said, that's just one of the considerations.
Okay, if there's no further comments.
Mr. Chair, I've got a question for Aaron.
Yes, Mr. Diaz.
Back to the zoning, I believe it's the RA eighty-seven hundred, I noticed, or eighty-seven thousand, that it said that garage, limited to garages, no larger than three-car garage, would that, this is on a two-acre parcel, would this preclude somebody from putting in a big shop?
The, if somebody were to come in with a use permit, yes, they would be limited in, in that size, and then that's the intent of that, so we don't end up backing into a situation where there's a commercial shop, but it wouldn't limit them from having a personal shop, no.
Yeah, you know, but, you know, two acres, you could use a tractor or two and some implements and stuff, so you could, you could probably build a pretty good-sized shop back there, and then for your personal, you know, for me, like, I would like restoring old cars, and, and you kind of need stuff like that for your equipment, so three-car maximum is kind of prohibitive and kind of restrictive to me.
What if you don't call it a garage?
Well, Mr. Diaz, as you are probably familiar, a lot of homes in that, that area of Tulare have their, their own shops going, so I, I don't see that as a limiting factor when we go through the building permit process, we rarely see those shops limited to, to three-car garages.
Yeah, and you're right, but my, my thing that could come up is you might have a neighbor that might not want that shop next door to them, and they may come in there and say, hey, you know, he's not allowed to do this.
Well, and that, and that, we, again, we haven't really seen that, because I think people acknowledge each other's shops out there, but the, that's the zoning as it sits right now, so we, we could take another look at the zoning code itself, it's not, it's not a condition like any use permit, we didn't, we didn't just make that up, but that's, that's the zoning, so.
That's sort of why I asked my question.
Okay, well, that's, just want to bring it up.
One more question, procedural.
That's like three or four now, but okay.
That's point two seven six whatever something, okay, on page twenty-seven, Sandy, it says engineering conditions, are we going to adjust those before and clean it up a little before sending it on, because that mentions Road Avenue 232, or maybe I'm reading it wrong? It's supposed to be 132, right?
You'll have to bear with me, because I don't have access to a hard copy of the packet, but if I remember correctly, I had talked to the Public Works Department.
Yeah.
Concerning the Caltrans comments, limiting access, and inquired about them, whether or not they needed to revise their comments, and they did revise their comments, and if I remember correctly, they were switching to require access off of 132 rather than 232 for parcel number six.
Okay, because this one still mentions connecting to 232, on page twenty-seven.
So that last sentence reads, access to parcel six shall be constructed to a one parcel standard PVAE from the proposed thirty-foot wide PVAE, is that, was that the fix, Sandy?
It went from a twenty to a thirty.
Well, I'm just saying that it's no longer directly to.
Two sentences before that, Aaron, yeah.
Condition number eight, it says all improvements serving this subdivision shall be considered in accordance with Tulare County improvement standards, the private, the vehicular access easement also to the prolongation of Road 132, not 232, serving parcels one through six shall be improved to a paved width of 24 feet with a thirty-foot wide right-of-way extending to the north line to parcel five with the Caltrans standard drive approach connecting to the easement on Avenue 232, and what that is talking about is the private road on the east side of the project, is talking about approving that existing road and having that existing road, you know, connect to 232 with the Caltrans standard drive approach, so it's not talking about the original easement that was proposed on the west side to provide access to number six, it's talking about the private road on the east side, making improvements to it, having it done to county standards, and having where it connects to 232 be to Caltrans standards.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Okay, I think we've hashed this out pretty good, I'll, I'll close the public comment, and we'll move on to the planning commissions, someone like to make a motion to approve, I think we have three separate items, right?
That's correct, yes.
So someone like to make a motion on the, the first, please?
Make a motion to, oh, this blue one, right? We're reading that one?
A, you go down to approve, recommend that the board.
That we recommend that the board of supervisors approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code of Regulations, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and approve general plan amendment number GPA 20-007 to expand the hamlet development boundary, HDB, of East Tulare Villa Hamlet, and change the county's land use designation on approximately seventy-nine acres from valley agriculture to mixed use.
Do I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Steve, second, roll call.
Mick Alroy?
Yes.
Melise?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Wilatch?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Aguilar.
Just recused himself from answering, yes.
Okay, do I have a motion on the next item, recommend to the board, Maria, you're on a roll.
All right, I recommend that the board of supervisors, or I motion that the board of supervisors approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code of Regulations, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and approve zone change number PZC 20-002 to change the zone district on one 12-acre parcel from AE 40, exclusive agriculture, 40-acre minimum, to RA 87, rural residential, eighty-seven thousand square foot minimum, east of Tulare.
Do I have a second, please?
I'll second.
A roll call?
Mick Alroy?
Yes.
Melise?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Wilatch?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Okay, do I have another motion, Maria?
Let me breathe, okay, so I motion that the board of supervisors approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code of Regulations, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and approve tentative subdivision map number TSM 20-001 to subdivide the 12-acre parcel into six two-acre lots east of Tulare.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, roll call?
Mick Alroy?
Yes.
Melise?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Wilatch?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carried, and so we're going to move to item six, as we wait for Commissioner Gil Aguilar to come back up, and so.
Thank you.
Aaron Bach, Planning Director, Resource Management Agency, as far as the director's report, didn't really have anything prepared today, but we are working feverishly on a few M&amp;Ds right now, to get some projects in front of you, hopefully within the next couple of months, that are, aren't that complicated, but the, we did release the draft EIR for Rexford Solar, which is, as you were all noticed, is a very large solar project on the south side of the county, you know, with one of the largest solar companies in the United States, so that should get in front of you, hopefully by the end of the summer, that's a big one, so if you want to check your notices, take a look at it, but yeah, we've been working pretty hard on the environmental side to keep projects moving despite the working-from-home orders, and we've been very successful getting people out of our offices and working from home, so that we don't slow down or any of the progress, so we, we haven't had any problems so far with maps or anything else like that being delayed, so I do want to commend staff for being able to act quickly and react, and so that we're almost to a point now where we can be purely on our computers and not necessarily handing out paper anymore, but we'll, we'll see where we're at when things go back to normal, or if they ever get back to that kind of normal, but yeah, again, I like to commend staff for, for being able to, to operate so efficiently during these times.
Where is that project at, that solar project?
Yeah, it's near the Rich Grove, Terabella area, but yeah, it's, it's, it's a big one. I believe Elma or Jessica gave notice to everybody about the draft EIR, so she should have gotten an email, yeah.
There's already a really large one just north of.
Yeah, Tulare Solar, yeah, and this is, this is about three times that.
Wow.
Okay, seeing that, I'd just like to compliment you, Steve, you have the greatest color hair and the nicest shirts, I think I'm going to grow a mustache, and so.
Good luck with that.
Good luck, I know.
But to be fair, though, he would have to shave his, so you guys start at the same time and see how it goes.
I like your thinking, Maria, thank you. Also, I'd just like to ask Maria, maybe she can tell us, because we're all concerned about coronavirus, and your company's been in the news, if you can comment, comment, otherwise we respect the confidentiality of your position.
The official word is I do not represent the company in public matters, so I cannot comment on the record officially about any of that, from the personal side, as somebody who does work there, I, I did test and I'm negative, so that's why I'm showing up, I am not personally worried about our protocols, so officially, I do not represent the company, so nothing I said today qualifies as a public company statement.
Okay.
All right? Yep, you're welcome.
Any other comments by my fellow commissioners, otherwise I'm going to close the meeting. Record time almost.
Nothing here.
Meeting adjourned.
No cookies today, huh?
Actually, I brought like six dozen, you know, and, and sorry, I can't fax them to you, no, I didn't bring any, I did bring gloves, yeah.
Thank you, we'll see you. Is there one more meeting for this month, Velma?
Yes, you do have another meeting in May.
Twenty-seventh.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
For Velma, I'm finally going to get my other cataract surgery here on the twentieth, so I won't be at the next meeting.
Okay. Are they going to give you a third eye?
No, they're just going to give me my second one back.
Okay.
You're getting the, the fancy surgery or the straight-out?
The, the one Medicare pays for.
Yes, that's the manual version.
That's right.
Turn it off here, on the Zoom. To log you off.
Where are you having it done, Ed?
The CRI Center, they're on.
On 132, if you pass before this is, that's also 13198.
Are they still talking?
Because originally my house was given a different number.
But I can't hear them now, oh, because it's not over here?
Yeah.
Okay, but they can hear each other then.
Yeah. Brought through, Mr. Trask. Had a sweet.
In their meeting, they're going to stop talking, right?
Yes.
Because I'm the.
That will disconnect each other from each other, yeah.
Okay.
So I definitely can make sure that we're set for Facebook next time.
I think we're going to try just doing the Granicus like we did today, I just, the only thing I do need your help with, because I contacted Jason Trombone, right, he's the one that helped me, I need that again, I, I sent him an email at the beginning of the week, because I noticed that, let me show you.
I get Amazon stuff from my neighbors more than they get.
Right, okay, so I noticed that here on the, below, it says Facebook, Granicus, you see? It has the old date, April 15, so I emailed him and said, hey, can you scratch this line off, you know, keeping this, but he, he didn't do it and he didn't respond, so I'm pretty sure he's working at home and he has other things to do, but since we're going to not use Facebook next time, just taking it all off, anything that says Facebook, yeah, because we're just going to do Granicus, see how it's still in progress, and it works fine, I mean, they can, when I'm loading it, they can, I post on them.
Okay, good, so we'll just revert it back then to the way it was before we hit the meeting.
Yeah.
So, did you CC me when you emailed him?
Um, I don't think I did.
Because that's kind of a part of my job, is just to make sure that somebody's responding.
Oh, okay.
Get it done before.
I didn't notice it until Monday when I was looking, I said, oh my goodness, it has April 15 date, so yeah, but if we just take off the heart right now, we should be good for next time, the Granicus.
Yeah, and then I, there's somebody internally probably within RMA that, that works with that as well, I'm guessing?
I don't know, I've never, I've always just sent IT a message.
Okay, so.
And it was always like somebody that was handling Granicus at the time, and then they would always move up, or they would pass it along to somebody else.
So there's, yeah, there was some attrition with that position, I guess, but, okay, well, yeah, I'll, as soon as I get back to, to my house, then I will go ahead and make sure to, to talk to him and make sure we have it taken into that request under your name.
Okay, thank you, yeah, if that can just get removed, and we'll try it with just Granicus, because I see, I think the whole problem was, was when we were using Granicus and this Creston, right? That's what was happening.
Yeah, yeah, I know there's been a lot of issues, but, so, but everything seemed to work okay, I think that must have been an user error, Ed, possibly?
I think that, or, because Samantha also says she couldn't hear, or Sandy was speaking too low.
Okay, okay.
Because he was kind of, I mean, he was low here, I don't think he was direct, speaking directly into the microphone.
Okay, that could be as well.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to send the planning committee and just remind them that when they are doing a presentation, to speak. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to send the planning department and just remind them that when they are doing a presentation, just speak louder.
Yeah.
Because that's part, that'll probably help. Yes.
All right, Velma.
Thank you so much, Justin. I don't know what happened with that. Facebook's been.
I was following the right procedure, I think, to share it, but why didn't we do that?
All right, Velma.
Thank you.
I'll talk to you later this week about the, making sure that the page is updated.
Okay.